Testing, testing. I don't think I'm live yet.
No.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I'm sorry we're starting late. We started our caucus meeting at six o'clock. It's two hours and 20 minutes later, and we still are not finished going through everything we have to go through on the agenda. But I know there are a number of people who want to ask questions, so we're going to start right away with the public question period. Then we'll take another recess, hopefully not too long, and then we will do, I hope, the meeting. So without further ado, as far as I know, there were no questions submitted to Pierre Tap in advance of the meeting. Pierre, is that correct?
You received comments, Mr. Mayor, about a minor derogation, I believe, from Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's the only thing. It was not a question, so that's the thing.
Well, that's fine. The council has discussed that for a considerable time already. So all those comments were duly noted. Okay, so if there's nothing else, does anybody submitting questions? Let me see if I can find questions, questions. I'll figure all this out eventually. Let me see. Click here. Questions, new questions, all right. I'm going to learn this by the time COVID is over. I'll have learned it. All right, we have our first question. Adriana Decker. The question is, I was wondering what is the, I think it means response, or maybe it means reason. What is the reason for wanting to ban circular driveways in certain areas? Okay, and two, I live in H3, and there are several circular driveways on my street, and they look nice. Could there be a public consultation about it? It is quite a ban with like that. Okay. Circular driveways have not been approved since I became mayor. Whether they were, what the policy was before I became mayor, about 15 and a half years ago, I don't know. But since I became mayor, we have never approved a circular driveway. We've gotten a few requests. I remember one in particular. Charming owner, but no, she couldn't get her a circular driveway. The problem with circular driveways, and you have it on your street, in fact, I won't identify where you live, but I know where you live, and there are circular driveways on your street, and what happens is, there's very little room to blow the snow. And so they have to blow it forward, 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 and then the poor guy who lives right after the last circular driveway gets a huge mound. And they complain. They complain a lot. I was told by somebody who lives on your street that at one point, when it was a lot of snow in the winter, and this is before my time, the policy was made that if you have a circular driveway, we're putting snow on half your driveway. You can use the other half. You can't use half because it became impossible. Now, that hasn't happened in the last 15 and a half years that I've been around, but that is the biggest problem with circular driveways is the snow, the snow problem. The other problem is, they're very convenient, no question about it, but not everybody, the PAC, Planning Architectural Committee, is not a huge fan. They take away a lot of green space, and we want more green space, not less green space. So circular driveways don't do that. Now, you're referring, I guess, to something I think we have on the agenda tonight, where we are going to allow circular driveway. Well, I have to say one more thing, sorry. This was an unwritten policy until, I think, 2016, when we had all our bylaws rewritten, all our planning bylaws rewritten, almost all of them. Massive undertaking, and at that time, we made it in our bylaw, you can't have a circular driveway. But we made a mistake. We did not realize that the way it's written, you can't have a circular driveway anywhere, including on Cote St. Luke Road. But on Cote St. Luke Road, we do, in fact, want circular driveways. There has to be a place where people can drop off people going into the apartment buildings. So we do want circular driveways on Cote St. Luke Road, and that's what the bylaw change that we're making is going to do. It's going to allow them again on Cote St. Luke Road, which is a good thing. And especially since the Times from Montreal, which controls the parking on that side of the street, doesn't allow any parking at all, no stopping, in fact. So we do need circular driveways on Cote St. Luke Road, and it just came to our attention. I won't bore you with all the details, but it came to our attention, so we're changing that by law ASAP. Okay, so that's the story there. Okay, I'm going to move on.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add, the ban about circular driveway is not something new from tonight. This is already in our bylaw since a long, long time. It's not something new.
I think it's 2016, actually.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess that's new to some people, not so new to others, but it's 2016.
Okay, if I may jump in and respectfully make a comment, and maybe it's not for now, but I make my position clear. There is ways to deal with the snow removal. I think it's time to allow residents to have circular driveway with the condition to have heated driveway, where you don't have to move snow into the street nor to the neighbor. So that is my position, and this will come as an item to be discussed in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, well, that is a very good comment, since the, well, it doesn't address the green space issue, but it does go a long way to addressing the snow problem. So yes, council can certainly discuss that in caucus at a future time. You can bring it up again, and we'll discuss it. And this applies, the heated idea also would apply to these very long driveways that go down beside a house. They go all the way down, and then they turn into the garage. Again, if they are heated, then that's a lot better than when they're not heated, because they're not heated, it's a lot of snow that comes out on the street. So, so looking into the possibility of doing something about that for those who want to heat their driveways, and more and more people are heating their driveways when they build their new houses, so it may be something we can look at.
Except that it doesn't, it doesn't actually help you with the snow blowing. If a guy has a heated driveway, you still have the problem of having to blow the snow onto his driveway, heated or not.
No. If you don't blow snow into a driveway, where you blow snow to the driveway.
That's the whole point of the mayor's argument in the first place, was that you have the snow blower coming by from the city street, and he blows it onto a yard. If you have a driveway there, you can't blow it onto his driveway, so you blow it onto the next guy's yard, which is unfair. So if you're heating it or not, it doesn't make a difference.
No, it does make a difference, because what happens now is the gardeners take all that snow from that long circular driveway, or in the case of long, they put it on the street.
That's what you didn't, yeah.
Yeah, so we.
And you're going to go back to what they were doing before you were there and blow the snow onto the guy's driveway, the circular driveway?
I didn't say.
That is not what he's saying. He says to move, to remove the snow from the driveway into the street. That's not, that's not what you said. He, the mayor, is saying that the snow that is accumulated on the driveway is usually moved out from the driveway into the street. So if the driveway is heated, you have nothing to move.
Yes, but Jack is saying. Okay, councillors, councillors, let's debate this in caucus in the future. But I thank councillors Eddy, councillor Ofassey for the comments, but we have a lot more stuff to do, both in caucus and council. Okay, the next question here is, hi, will the meeting start soon? Thanks. Okay, started. Now, next one, Jeremy Levi. Circular driveways help keep more parked cars off of roads. This is especially useful in winter for snow clearing operations. What is the reason for prohibiting them? Well, I just explained the reason for prohibiting them, and, and yes, we don't want cars on the road, that is true. But we have been fine tuning our snow removal operations, and it's getting better and better every year. And we now use as necessary temporary no parking signs to get people to get their cars off the street. So it's working, and it's really, it's something that we'll discuss in caucus. And who knows, maybe we'll change our minds if the driveways are heated, maybe not. I don't know. We will see, but we'll discuss it. Okay, moving on. Morton Grostern, in response to my request for information, relating to the special audit of the flower and beautification activity, Madame Hoyer wrote that her audit report could not be made public for two reasons. The reader may not be sufficiently knowledgeable to understand the report and to protect the auditor from liability if a person mentioned therein claims that they are injured by the report. As far as I know, the two individuals requesting copies are Jeremy Levi and myself, Morton Grostern. As it turns out, we are both members of the Quebec Order of CPAs, and are educated, trained, experienced, and certified to read and fully comprehend the details of her report. Also, the names of the town employees mentioned therein could be redacted to avoid liability. Given the town's mission statement proclaims, I'm afraid I have to find a way to move that question. I will try. Can somebody move that question for me so I can see the bottom of it?
I can continue reading it. It says, could be redacted to avoid liability, given the town's mission statement proclaims, open quotes, govern in an equitable and transparent manner, close quote, surely in view of this being such an important manner, matter, actually matter, redacted copies could be made available for concerned residents to examine why is this not done immediately? End of question.
Okay, I saw those emails between Morton Grostern and our auditors, and they actually mentioned three reasons. They also mentioned that this type of audit is virtually never made public. It's a private audit done for the benefit of the officials who run the town, and that is another reason. And, and after that, Morton Grostern wrote back to the auditors, thanking them very much, and saying that he understood. Apparently, he no longer understands. Okay, but nevertheless, the auditors have made it very clear that they will sue us if we make the report public, so we're not going to do it. And as far as redacting names go, I did ask the auditors to do the exact opposite. I said, you've written a report, and you're talking in generic terms. You're not talking about the individuals, even though everybody on council knew exactly who they were referring to. I said, I want more clarity. I want the actual names there, because when things are vague, people can imagine all kinds of things, nefarious things. There was nothing nefarious going on. So that was what I wanted, but once they said that there's no way that report will not be made public, so it was academic. It didn't matter. So redacting doesn't help. Anyway, I can assure you that, that there's really minor things that came out of the report, and, and we have already acted on them or will act on them in the future. Certainly, nothing, nothing that anyone would be really terribly enlightened about. Okay, next. Anonymous, favorite person. It would be wonderful if a goal for 2021 would be to start meetings on time. You can do it, Bill. Just try. You'll see that a little respect goes a long way. Okay, I thank you. We really are trying. And, and that's why I said, you know, we were in the middle of discussion, and I said, we've got to stop here, got to start a meeting, and then we're going to recess. So there'll soon be recess, but then we'll finish. Morton Grostern, not so fast. My time begin delving into this matter. I submitted several access information requests. Major Tap sent me some 245 pages of documents. Whoops. Somebody made that disappear. Oh, no, it's still coming up. Okay. Okay, whoops. All right, sorry, sorry. I'll get back to that one. Anonymous, there's another question that came first. It says, I've noticed in walking through many streets in Hampstead, that sidewalks, snow clearing has taken a chunk out of the grass on private homes or apartments. I noticed this last year and thought it was a one-time event after one snowstorm, but I see again this has happened. Can this be rectified? The short answer is no. I would love it, because if there's any serious damage done to people's lawns, and I say serious, not something that's going to grow back all by itself, but if there's any serious damage, we repair it, no question. So it'd be much better for the town if that didn't happen, but it's a key issue that we clear snow as fast as possible. And when people park on the street, our sidewalk plows are not going to take off the mirror of a car. So they have to veer a little bit, and that's how the damage usually occurs. You know, perfection is just not possible. Our goal is to get that snow removed, removed quickly, and residents can help by please keeping your cars off the street during snow removal operations, whether there's a temporary no parking sign or not. Okay, next question. Morton Grostern, not so fast. Not so fast. My time begin delving into this matter. I submitted several access to information requests. Major Tap sent me some 245 pages of documents to examine. Not a single page dealt with budgetary and financial control. Not a single page dealt with management evaluation of the activity, and not a single page dealt with council oversight, although these were specifically requested. As I understand it, the amount spent annually on flowers, et cetera, is at least, takes my breath away, 750,000, but I'm led to believe that the actual amount is closer to 900,000 or perhaps a million annually. I don't know where these numbers come from, but they're totally false. I understand enough about these matters to suggest that the special audit report likely deals or should deal with the missing management reporting identified above, as well as the method of organization and administration of this activity. Further, I'm, okay, councillor Gold, could you finish it for me?
So, so that further, I am not sure if the town needs to follow the auditor's request for secrecy. This may very likely be against public order and the right of a resident to understand how public funds are being used. Even national secrets can be distributed in a redacted report. Residents, access to the special audit report is important, so that a concerned residence can put this matter to bed and not remain suspicious of this activity and those who participated in it. Something is just not right when an email you get from a council on this very matter gets you to raise it publicly at a council meeting. Why, hang on just one second. Why rate, why would you not agree to immediately provide this access to this important report? End of question.
Thank you very much. I've already answered the question.
Given that I was in charge of the audit, can I chime in here?
You will. At your own risk, because you know perfectly well. I mean, I would love, love to say everything that was in that report. I would absolutely love it, but I'm sorry. I'm not taking a chance on being personally sued or having the town sued, so I'm not going to do that.
But I want to answer the question. I think it's important that we understand what happened and what was going on. And I am in favor of everything being made public. I think that when you keep things not public, then people create rumors and, and start creating ideas in their head. I think we started this because there was an issue, I think, with regards to the management or the lack of, of management or of a green foreman kind of in charge of beautification. And so we brought in the auditors to give us an outside opinion of how this was run, and we went back three years to see, to get a better, more in-depth idea rather than just the past year. And the auditors came back, and I think it's safe to say, without myself getting sued, that there was no illegal activity. There was no enrichment by anybody. There was no malicious intent by anybody involved. There were problems with management of the program. There were problems, as I think it's safe to say, there was an issue with having non-staff people kind of in charge of a program only because we didn't have a staff person who could do the job. And that non-staff person worked with the best interests of the town, but at the same time, I think it's safe to say that that, that it's an issue to be, to put a non-staff person who doesn't have accountability to the town in, in the same way that a staff does in charge of, of, of programs. And so that, I think, was the main takeaway that I had, was that there was not, no smoking gun. There was no, nobody tried to screw anybody. Sorry, lack of, poor choice of words. Nobody did anything nefarious. Nobody did anything illegal. Nobody did anything with malicious intent. But there were des lacunes in the management, and I think that our, our big takeaway was that we should not have a, a non-staff person outside of the chain of command in charge of major programs. And that was pretty much what I said. And I don't think that, that, that creates an issue as far as liability or whatever. And I think that's pretty much the takeaway from it. Now, if, if anybody thinks that we really should be giving this thing out, that's between them and the auditor. That's not between them and us. And I would say, let somebody else decide that. So if you file an access information, and the government decides that it's within your right to have it, then, then fine, you can have it. If the government decides it's not within your rights to have it, then fine, you can't have it. I'm not a lawyer. But at the end of the day, bottom line, I asked for this audit, so it was in, I wanted to know the truth, and I know the truth, and I feel comfortable with the truth, and I feel comfortable that we have, we're able to say, okay, we know what the result is, and we know what we need to keep an eye out for in the future. That's all.
Okay, thank you, councillor Eddy. As a general rule, I might disagree with some of your nuances slightly, but certainly I can't possibly disagree with the bulk of your message over there. I will, I'm not going to comment on the report, but I will say this. I have wanted, and my wife, who was the chief volunteer behind all the beautifications since 2008, when she was asked by the council at that time to do it. Both of us have wanted a green foreman for a very, very long time, and we still want a green foreman. And we had one in Trevor Lane going back, and that worked wonderfully. We hired another one who did not last more than, I think, a few weeks. And we have looked since then, and it's very, very hard to find one. But I'd be willing to pay a lot of money for a good green foreman. I think it would be absolutely magnificent. And I know my former volunteer wife agrees 100% with me. This is something we want, have wanted, still want. That I can say, but I'm not commenting on what the report said. I'm just saying that's something that we want. Hopefully, we'll find one, and, and I believe in caucus, the council has, has expressed the wish to our director general that, yeah, let's look for a really, let's look for a green foreman, and let's pay whatever we have to pay to get one, within our salary grades, of course. Okay, moving on. Anonymous wants to know, will you be taking a break during this meeting? It's very disrespectful of our time. Why can't you simply remove items from the agenda that haven't been discussed? Well, I don't think any town would do that. Our job as councillors is to deal with items for the good of the town. That is our main job. And we need to take the time, we need to discuss these items before, during the meeting, whenever, at caucus meetings, in between council meetings. We need to do this. This is how you run a town well. So no, we aren't going to drop items. At least, I don't think we will. We haven't quite finished discussing one long discussion, but I don't think we're going to be dropping anything. I hope not. Okay. Next one is anonymous, different anonymous, same anonymous. I don't know. Perhaps anonymous can write anonymous male or anonymous female, just for variety, but okay. What needs to happen in order for these meetings to start on time? I realize that the caucus meetings tend to run late, but why does that come at the expense of the residents? Residents get one opportunity each month to participate in their town discussions. Why does it need to be potluck when we start, when breaks will be taken, and when they will resume? It just seems unfair to the public. I acknowledge that, that, that would be the perspective of those of you who are watching the meeting. I'm sorry about that. I apologize for that. But our first duty is to do what's in the best interest of the town. If that means the meetings are going to start late, sometimes they will. We started, as I said, six o'clock this evening. Not everybody can make it for six o'clock, and certainly not for five o'clock. So we could, of course, schedule our council meetings for nine or 10 o'clock at night, but that would be a problem for other people. So, okay, that's that. Moving on. Morton Grostern, thanks, Jack. Why hide this? Okay, thank you for the comment. And Adriana Decker, why don't you meet the week before to discuss the items? So then you'll have time, and then more time to reflect, and then you'll be on time. Actually, the item that's taking the most time, we got, I got Sunday afternoon, which was a little late. And, and we have good reasons, which I'm not going to get into, for why we really would like to wrap it up and take care of it at tonight's meeting. Okay, that's it. I thank you very much. We are now calling a recess.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we, why don't we perhaps, since everyone's been waiting and they want to get the meeting underway, you know, the issue that we want to discuss is a bit later in the agenda. Why don't we cover some items first? Go through the departmental reports, and then we can recess later in the meeting. Just a suggestion.
Can I make a suggestion with this regard? This particular item that we have to discuss is a budget-related item, and we're going to be having a special budget meeting anyways. So I don't think we need to pass this until the budget anyway. So why don't we just pass this when we pass the budget?
Well, I would say that we have a lot of people, according to our director general, who would very much like to have this passed tonight. But I don't want to get into the item in detail. As for covering the first few items, we're going to have to add a few more things to the agenda, and normally that's done when we adopt the agenda. So since, until we finish discussing this item, we can't even adopt the agenda. So really, I think we don't really have a choice.
The budget meetings in a week or two, so why, why, an extra week, well, I don't think will make a difference, will it?
Okay, let me ask our director. You're here. Is it your recommendation that we wait till after the budget meeting, that we don't deal with this issue till December 21st, which will be our budget meeting, or do we try to do it tonight?
Well, personally, and as the director general and representing the administration and all the directors and so on, I firmly believe that if we could do it sooner, it is much better than later, particularly with the holidays coming up. And it has been a very long year, okay, and there were already a lot of delays and so on, not because of outdoing, but simply because of the COVID-19 situation. So my answer is yes, if we could do it tonight, it would be much appreciated by the rank and file and the directors and the employees.
But we're talking two, we're talking two weeks, though, right?
So, okay, so why not just change it, the schedule, and make it the last thing on the agenda? Go through the entire meeting.
It is the last thing on the agenda.
What?
It is, it is the last thing on the agenda.
So fine, so at the end of the meeting, then you, you recess. And if you want, you can even have like a special second question period before that last thing where you recess.
Okay, I'm going to ask our town clerk. Pierre, can we add items to the agenda somewhere later in the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you have, you can do whatever you want to do with the agenda. You can switch to one item to the other one. The, as long you make a decision on every item or decided. The, as long you make a decision on every item or decided to defer. But you you can do so, Mr. Mayor, as you wish.
Okay. Okay, in that case, I certainly don't mind continuing with the meeting. We'll take a recess later on, and we will add potentially a couple of other items to the agenda later. So so some more questions have come in. Let me just, this one, I take, anonymous, I take offense to the fact that you just suggested identifying our genders while only giving two options. This is very ignorant and close-minded of you. All right, I'm sorry. So I was grow, when I grew up, there were two genders. And and I have nothing against transgender LGBTQ people. I have nothing against anybody. I have close family that fit into one of those LGBTQ. I have close family that were leaders in the movement for at least one of those letters. So please, but now, to me, they're males, they're females. And if somebody changes their sex and now they're a female, I'll call them a female. They changed and now they're male, I'll call them a male. That's fine with me, but it's one or the other, it's a binary choice. Sorry if you don't agree. Okay, next, Adrienne Decker, yes, please, okay. And we move on to our agenda. So give me a second. And let me see what's coming up. There we go. Okay, the three-point, three-point oh adoption of the agenda. And I'm already noting that I hope that we'll add a few more items to the agenda, but based on the agenda we have at the moment, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Fassi.
Oh, Fassi. It is resolved that the agenda of the regular meeting is hereby adopted. As submitted, anyone opposed? No, good. Monthly reports. We will start with community services, councillor Wigginsburg.
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to hear people here, I can't see you. I hope everybody's staying safe still, things are still up in the air when it comes to COVID. Just don't forget your masks, washing your hands, keeping your distance, and please stay safe. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we still have a very quiet CSR. So I will give you whatever update I can. All of our indoor fall/winter sports programming right now is on hold again for this foreseeable future until we have some changes, some more positive outlooks. The, I know the sports program, union ice hockey, is on hold right now because of the Quebec government. If things open up and things change, we'll be ready to go. I know that Montreal West has also put aside ice time for Hampstead residents. But so we'll see about how that's going, trying to keep people moving and outdoors and and active as much as you can, try to keep yourself healthy. Having said that, we did, Hampstead did try to do a few things to try to keep community spirit. One was a Halloween contest. This year, the staff, the CSR drove around the streets of Hampstead taking photos of homes decorated for Halloween. A winner was chosen and a gift basket was delivered. The objective of this activity was not just to find a winner, but honestly, it was to unearth the community spirit of this town and try to just keep people's spirits up. And it's really hard, we all know how hard it is for everyone, winter coming. So that really is our goal, and we're constantly thinking of other ways to try to have that happen. Unfortunately, our citizenship ceremony had to be canceled this year because of COVID-19. And however, we did do a short Remembrance Day ceremony. It was slightly modified, it was quite modified. We had some, we invited some people separately, individuals from the SPVM, members of government, clergy, et cetera, to come to lay wreath. Pictures were taken and a montage created. And then on November 11th, the last post was played by PSO Badly along with Commander Fitzgerald. A small ceremony was held to end a two-day-long wreath-laying celebrations. So it was our way of trying to remember. And hopefully, going forward next year, we'll be able to go back to normal. And as for the time being, everything is just kind of on hold. And hopefully, things will ease up after the holidays. I wish everybody very healthy and happy and holidays and New Year, and take care of yourself and your family, and just enjoy the time that you have with your family and friends in any way you can. Don't forget to wear your masks and keep your distance and keep washing your hands. And Mayor, that is the end of my report.
Thank you very much, and we'll move on to, and of course, I share the views on being safe. Okay, finance, councillor Edery.
I'm glad I still have it. So finance, basically, we are in the midst of budget preparation. That's pretty much what's all encompassing for finance right now. We are going over the budget, we are line by line, we are going over PTI, which is a large capital expense program. We're, I think we're pretty much going to be a very different year this year as far as our budget presentation is concerned. We're looking at two different philosophies that are going to be presented. And so we will see how that works. Just as far as the current numbers are concerned, our our park fund is at 1.3 million with another 318,000 roughly in the in the pipeline for this year, so 1.6 million. COVID hit in a particular way. So as far as our our costs were concerned, as far as the impact on the town was concerned from a financial point of view, the biggest part was the impact on CSR. Because, but CSR's revenue is linked to its expenses. So there was far less activities happening, and that decreased their revenue. But at the same time, it also decreased their associated expenses. So that was pretty much a wash. The other big impact was on transfer taxes. We were budgeting about 1.7 million. We're looking at, the last numbers I saw were about one and a quarter million. We're hoping maybe 1.5 million at the end of the year. So essentially, what we've had is this kind of weird inversion, where we've had fewer sales, but the sales are of a greater value. And that, what I understand, is because there's less inventory on the market. So that pushes the, whatever houses that exist on the market up in value. So we've got an increase in values, but less overall volume. And then going into 2021, we're being conservative, and we're going to say, you know what? We're not going to expect those same kind of numbers that we were expecting before. And I think actually, so we're passing in this, this evening, we're passing a modification to our our transfer tax rate, which is basically when you buy or sell a house. Until a couple of years ago, it was a fixed rate. Now, the provincial government allows through the Cities and Towns Act to have a variable rate. So it's the same as the variable rate that you would have, say, for for personal income taxes. The higher the value of the house, the higher the transfer tax will be. And so it goes from 0.5 in increments to 1%, 1.5%, 2% and 2.5%. And it's 2.5% above 1.034 million, which is actually below the average single-family house now. And the 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 projections based on previous years, we figured that will generate about an extra $500,000 a year in revenue, which will be borne mostly by, well, entirely by the buyer as opposed to the seller, although it it does act as an extra tax. So we're looking at a very complex set of circumstances going into 2021. We're looking at different philosophies as far as taxing or not taxing, as far as borrowing or using capital that we have saved up. And we will make those presentations to council, and we'll make, allow them to make an informed decision. And that's what that's what I view my job as. And that's about it for for finance at this point.
Thank you very much, moving on, councillor Goldwax.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everybody. I'd like to just start off with the portfolio of Public Works. Happy to report that no water main breaks during the reporting period. The contractor for the tree planting has finished all of their work. And of course, as we are now upon winter season, the shifting of the employees, of course, during the difficult planning with COVID and distancing and everything else of the employees, the winter shift has begun, so we do have two teams deployed during the day from Monday to Thursday. We have an overnight crew and a weekend crew. This is normal time, so weekend work that's being done is not considered overtime. The only time there'll be an overtime is if there is a a snow clearing or snowstorm operation where we have to bring in extra resources. So I was questioned on that, when we see a weekend crew, are we paying overtime or not? This is the way it's been scheduled, and it's working really well, keeping our town clean and proper. So kudos to the the Blues on their continued work. For the PTI investment strategy, we've been working on strategies for road sidewalks and sewers, and that has been submitted for what we call the Five-Year Plan to the Director of Public Works. We are awaiting the delivery of these new tractors for the sidewalks. I will state with that question that came about the lawns being destroyed, of course, when your car is parked close to a sidewalk, it does make it difficult. However, with these new tractors, they have a slightly narrower path. So that will happen, that will avoid these chunks of grass being pulled up. So hopefully, that will be a distant memory of lawn damages. I won't say it'll be perfect, though. Third grader has been approved by council, and we're waiting to deliver of that. This third grader will help during snow operations as well. And it will be ready to be deployed for snowstorm operations. I would like to talk about something near and dear me, as everyone knows, is the blood drive. And Hampstead has our annual blood drive every year in August, that we do sometimes host a special blood drive by appointment only. And we are happy to host another blood drive in January, again, by appointment only. But Hema Quebec wants to deploy that with us, and we're readily giving them our room and whatever they need to set this up and have it done. We all know that blood is giving gift of life. I know personally that giving blood does save a life. I'm asking everyone, if you are called, or if you have been selected and contacted to give blood by appointment, please make it a point to show up and spread the word so that more and more people give blood and and save more lives. I, councillor Wigginsburg, talked about the laying of the wreaths this year's November 11th. Remembrance Day obviously was quite poignant, despite the social distancing and then the lack of the groups in the schools singing and all the poems. However, I did participate on laying the wreath for the Holocaust survivors as I remember the RMR, and I was in full attire. And I thank Mike Fitzgerald and Officer Badly for their participation, everyone else in their participation. I would like to pay homage to, as we close the year off, to two dedicated employees who unfortunately lost their lives this year. So Mike Huckleck, who was a public security officer, and André Drouet, HR director. I wish their families and their mourning period to be peaceful. And they, and and I wish their families all the best during their difficult time. As we enter the holiday season with the season of lights, we are respective of the holiday you're celebrating. May the holiday season shed the miracle lights on you and your families and bestow upon all of you health and happiness. I'm asking everyone to stay safe, wash hands, wear a mask, and stay healthy. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you very much, councillor Button.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, councillor Goldwax, I love the new gaming headset. For those unaware, he's a avid Fortnite player, he can be followed on his.
No, 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 that is not true, that is not true. My son's mid.
So so that, thank you. So first of all, with regards to the youth, you know, as as councillor Goldwax and Wigginsburg said, you know, we we certainly want to encourage all the youth in the community to continue, obviously, washing hands, wearing a mask, social distancing. And, you know, while we may be the least likely to be impacted, we still can be impacted, and it's important that we do our part to protect the seniors and our parents and the community. So please, you know, do what you can, stay away from your your peers and wear masks. And especially as we enter the holiday period, and people will congregate to be responsible. With regards to the aquatics for the coming summer, there is some postings for assistant managers and managers, I believe, with the deadlines for mid to end of December. As well, we encourage residents that are qualified to look out for job applications, to submit their job app for job applications in January, when jobs will be available for lifeguards as well as day camp councillors. With regards to information technology, there's 1,690 My Hampstead accounts. And I think it's very important to note that the My.Hampstead account portal has been completely revamped. For residents unaware, you are all able to register for a portal, access to the portal, which will allow you to purchase garbage bags, register your dog, parking permits and so forth. It's been completely revamped and revitalized for the future of our websites and for access to the community. And it's a lot more intuitive to use and simpler to understand and go forward, go through. So we encourage residents to access that 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 aspect of the website, the My Hampstead portal. Otherwise, we are continuing to look at different ways to incorporate new aspects into that portal software, such as applying for permits online for urban planning and so forth. With regards to urban planning, very quickly, there were 59 permits issued this month, and year-to-date, 434 permits were issued for a total of $20,730,000. So as we continue to see throughout the year, residents are investing, reinvesting into their homes and their properties. And as a result, we're seeing, you know, record property values. And it's nice to see our residents take, you know, a valued interest in their properties and their homes and try and enjoy their 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 lives and their properties as much as possible. So as we move into, as everybody else has said, as we move into the holiday season, I wish everyone all the best, happy holidays, to remain safe, and hopefully, a prosperous and safer and better 2021. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and councillor Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm responsible for two portfolios, one of which is legal, which involves our town clerk. I would like to thank Major Pierre Tap for his report, which reads as follows. During this period, we had one assembly of the municipal council, the RCM been on November 2nd, and a special meeting on November 16th. Both council meetings were held virtually. Most of the clerk's work was done from his home office, except for a few days, which took place at his at town hall. We received several phone calls as well as emails from citizens, and we tried to respond quickly and efficiently to any of these requests. The town clerk was always available to respond to requests from the various services of the municipality, whether by email, web conference call, or direct calls. More particularly, we have been in direct contact with the head of many of our departments to resolve the various situations requiring our expertise on a day-to-day basis. We worked in collaboration on the development of the agenda for all November council meetings and its follow-up. We followed the development of government guidelines on the coronavirus crisis daily. We still discuss with different clerks from other towns regarding this delicate situation, and we are in contact with the clerks of other cities, and we share important logistic information. We attended a meeting of the clerks of the various demerished towns, and we discussed many important topics for our towns. The court being in slow motion, as for the past months, the majority of our litigation files have not changed in recent times. We are in constant contact with our lawyers on these different cases. The town clerk took part in a committee of experts set up by the Union des Municipalités de Québec on the subject of municipal insurance. The status document for each of our files is revised weekly and is included in the monthly report for the sole information of the members of council. Now, Mr. Mayor, I would also like to report to you on my other department for which I assume responsibility in virtue of my portfolio, which is public security. And this time, I would like to thank Lieutenant Brent Roberts for his report. At the same time, I should point out to our members of our community that Chief Operations Officer Mike Fitzgerald, who's been ill for quite a few months, is on, is in the process of returning to work, and we wish him a complete recovery and look forward to him working full-time starting in the month of January. The report of Lieutenant Roberts, first of all, I'll deal with the administration. The department continues to function well amidst the COVID-19 pandemic. One auxiliary officer is on CNESST after having slipped and hurt his ankle while on ship. One permanent officer continues short-term medical. One permanent officer continues short-term medical for non-life-threatening illness. Chief Fitzgerald is on sick leave, but as I said, he's expected back in January. Morale is good on the team and it is functioning well. A new Ford patrol vehicle has had the lights and siren installed, storage box delayed due to COVID pandemic. This will be, I think, the first on the island. We will have a public security vehicle which will be hybrid. I think, as usual, when we were the leaders with our Ford Explorers, I think we will be now the leader in on the island of Montreal with a hybrid Ford patrol vehicle. On operational level, the officers did extra hours to increase presence during the high holidays. Security measures such as the Jersey barricades worked as designed and were removed following Yom Kippur. The department continues to adjust its procedures to follow the ever-evolving provincial COVID-19 regulations. The highlights of the month are four. Number one, public security presence was greatly appreciated by residents during the high holidays. Public security team members continue to be vigilant and issue fines with a high number of construction projects in town. Public security bike patrol was used and was effective, particularly with so many ceremonies in the park. And public security responded to an injured man on Netherwood and provided first aid until the the 911 arrived to pick him up and take him to hospital. Before closing, Mr. Mayor, I would like to take this opportunity to wish our all our residents a happy holidays. They, I wish them good health, they stay safe, observe social distancing, as councillor Goldwax stated, to wash your hands and wear masks and good luck to all. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And thank everybody and I wish everybody happy holidays in case they're not going to stick around for the rest of this meeting. Okay. Moving on, we are the adoption of the minutes on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved, the minutes of the regular council meeting of November 2nd, 2020 and the special council meeting of November 16th, 2020 are hereby approved as submitted. Anyone opposed? No, okay. And that brings us to lots of minutes. 6.1. Approval of a payment for settlement on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It was resolved that the town council approves the complete and final payment of $45,000 without acknowledgement of any liability to lavery debilie in trust upon settlement of the file regarding the residents at 63 Stratford Road for water damages. That the town clerk or director general are authorized to sign the required documents with regards to the present resolution. Anyone opposed? No. Yeah, someone opposed? No, okay.
Trying to find myself here. I'm just trying to find where we are.
That was 6.1. Okay, now we're about to do 6.2. This is a resolution cancelling a previous resolution on motion of councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved to cancel the resolution 2020-295, adopting bylaw number 1026, decreeing and imposing taxes to cover the expenses of the town for the year 2021 and to postpone to a subsequent meeting of the council, the adoption of said bylaw 1026 on the notice of motion presented on November 2nd, 2020. Anyone opposed? Okay, no one. The councillors and I did ask some questions about this. But the bottom line is that we are expecting to have a budget meeting, a count, a special budget meeting, public meeting. Probably, I think it'll be December 21st, but the official notice will go out. And at that point, we will have the tax. Okay. 7.1, notice of motion. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. That is subsequent meeting of council draft bylaw number 1,001-6 entitled bylaw modifying the zoning bylaw number 1,001-2 will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a draft copy of bylaw number 1,001-6 and a motion to dispense with the reading of said bylaw was made. That was a notice of motion, okay.
We should just clarify what these things are about. That's that's the circular driveway thing.
That's right. I was I was about to do that, but that is correct. That is the circular driveway thing. 7.2. This is adoption of that very bylaw. And so on, motion councillor.
Budnig.
Budnig, seconded by councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri. It is resolved to approve draft bylaw number 1,001-6 entitled bylaw modifying the zoning bylaw number 1,001-2. Anyone opposed? No, no, he's opposed. It is the circular driveway thing. It'll have to be passed one more time. That was just the draft. Next meeting, we'll probably pass it the second final time. And that brings us to 7.3. Adoption of a bylaw. I'll explain it in a minute, but a motion of councillor.
Budnig.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved to approve bylaw number 1010-11, modifying bylaw number 1010 regarding the abolition of publication fees for public notices of minor exemption. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's about is if you want a minor exemption, there was a fee for requesting a minor exemption. I think it's $900 and I think it was 400 for publication. Since we now publish everything online, virtually everything online, there was no need for the publication fee, so we we've just gotten rid of it. That was the second passing of that, so that's the end of the publication fee. Okay. 7.4. Notice of motion about draft bylaw 1010-12. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
Budnig.
Budnig. That a subsequent meeting of council draft bylaw number 1010-12 entitled bylaw modifying the tariffs bylaw number 1010 regarding the urban planning department will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a draft copy of bylaw number 1010-12 and a motion to dispense with the reading of said bylaw was made. Okay, moving on, we get to 7.5, which is the adoption of that draft bylaw on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Budnig.
I think I heard Budnig first. It is resolved to approve draft bylaw number 1010-12 entitled bylaw modifying tariffs bylaw number 1010 regarding the urban planning department. Anyone opposed? It's adopted.
Just to clarify what that's about also. It's basically to say that if there's a, your permit is a function, the cost is a function of the amount of work dollar-wise that you do. And so we have the right to verify that dollar amount if somebody comes in with a low-ball figure that just doesn't make any sense.
Yes, that is part of it. I believe it also is related to the square footage and it's with respect to major modifications. We already had that with respect to new constructions. We are now doing the same sort of thing with respect to major modifications over a certain size. Okay. Another notice of motion regarding 1010-13. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg. That is subsequent meeting of council draft bylaw number 1010-13 entitled bylaw modifying the tariffs bylaw number 1010 regarding the recreation and cultural department will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a draft copy of bylaw number 1010-13 and a motion to dispense with the reading of said bylaw is made. Okay, and that brings us to 7.7, which is the adoption of that bylaw on draft bylaw on motion of councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved to approve draft bylaw number 1010-13 entitled bylaw modifying the tariffs bylaws number 1010 regarding the recreation and cultural department. Anyone opposed? No. And that is simply the fee schedule for community services and recreation and we hope that these various things will take place next summer. Okay. Brings us to 7.8. Adoption of bylaw 1027. Okay, a motion of councillor.
Budnig.
Budnig. Seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved to approve bylaw number 1027 entitled bylaw on the general application of the bylaws. Anyone opposed? No. Adopted.
Can you, can you just explain that for the public because it's a very general, pun intended, description?
Basically outlines who has the powers of delegation in the town. So the person's designated for the application of all municipal bylaws under jurisdiction of urban planning and then it names those those positions, the head of urban planning, the building inspector, the building inspection technician and any kind of general kind of anybody else that's designated by the DG has a delegation of powers to.
Thank you, that is correct. And we're now at 7.9, adoption of bylaw number 1028, bylaw decreeing and imposing duties on transfers of removables on motion of councillor.
Etteri.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri. It is resolved to approve bylaw number 1028, bylaw decreeing and imposing duties on transfers of removables. Anyone opposed? That's adopted and thank heavens, it now means we will be making an extra $500,000 approximately a year, which is a lot of money. Okay.
Glad we didn't start this before.
Yes, I would have to agree with you, councillor Alfasi. 7.10. Notice of motion of draft bylaw number 1029 regarding towing. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded, that, sorry, that is subsequent meeting of council draft bylaw number 1029 entitled bylaw regarding towing in the town of Hampstead will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a draft copy of bylaw number 1029 and a motion to dispense with the reading of said bylaw was made. Which brings us to 7.11, which is adoption of said bylaw on motion councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved to approve draft bylaw number 1029 entitled bylaw regarding towing in the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I think that it's advisable that you read the the four or five the items detailing the where the tickets will be given and for what purposes. Do you want me to read it?
Since I don't see it in front of me in my.
All right, I will. During snow removal session.
I think you should.
During snow removal sessions, general maintenance, cleaning, renewal or construction of infrastructure for municipal purposes, the town of Hampstead may have any road vehicle towed at its owner's expense from spaces where no parking is allowed in accordance with the period of parking prohibition. A ticket for prohibited parking will be issued to the owner of the vehicle concerning, including in addition to the fine for prohibited parking, the towing cost plus a 15% increase as an administrative fee. If applicable, an additional amount may be charged for storage by the towing company guarding the vehicle and depending on whether an agreement with the town so provides. The town's public security department is responsible for enforcing this bylaw. The present bylaw comes into force in accordance with the law. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you for giving ample warning to scofflaws. Okay. 8.1. And I know I read that, so I don't know why it's not in this particular package.
It was two pages up on the package.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, 8.1. Deposit of minutes of the regular PAC meeting held on November 9th, 2020. Each member of council having received copies, the town clerk deposits minutes of the regular planning advisory committee meeting held on November 9th, 2020. The council takes notice of said minutes by the town clerk. And that now brings us to the beginning of our urban planning resolutions.
Page 153.
Yes, indeed, of 480. Okay, 8.2. Concerning 49 Holtham Road. On motion of councillor.
Budnig.
Budnig, seconded by councillor. Schaefer. Is resolved that the addition to a detached single-family dwelling located at 49 Holtham Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on November 9th, 2020 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that the two windows on its center, second floor front facade must be replaced by only one larger window. The lower section of the overhang wall above the garage door must be slightly higher and the roof above the main entrance door must be slightly higher to match the stone band on the front facade. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1,001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Programme bylaw number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted.
This has in front of my.
And I think for people listening to that, you can see just how detailed-oriented our planning and architectural committee is. They really try hard to make every project to be as perfect as possible. And while I know some residents complain that it costs them money, at the end of the day, they're almost always happy because the house is better. Okay, just going through till I get to the next one. 8.3. This is 51 Thurlow Road. On motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Budnig.
Budnig. It is resolved, the addition to a de, to a semi-detached single-family dwelling located at 51 Thurlow Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on November 9th, 2020 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that the third floor balcony must be offset to be in front of the bedroom. The window on the third floor bathroom should bring natural light to the bathtub. A patio door is preferable to access the balcony from the bedroom. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1,001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Programme bylaw number 775. And anyone opposed? No, and that's adopted. It's another illustration of the detail to which the planning and architectural committee goes to. And this particular project came back to the planning and architectural committee, I think, at least three times. So a lot of work was done by the committee and and the architects and everybody to get things just right. Okay. And now that I think of it, this is another reason why we can't just throw items off the agenda. People are waiting to proceed with their homes. They need to have these things passed if possible. Okay, 8.4. This one has to do 6060 McDonald Road on motion of councillor.
Budnig.
Budnig, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that the authorization for an addition in the rear yard and the right lateral yard to a semi-detached bi-family dwelling located 6060 McDonald Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on November 9th is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1,001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the Site Planning and Architectural Integration Programme bylaw number 775. Anyone opposed? No, okay. Brings us to
229 Netherwood.
Yeah. 8.5, 229 Netherwood.
Page 296.
Right. And I have the newest version of this. Okay. It is proposed by councillor.
It's technically, there's an intervention because it's a minor exemption.
Minor derogation, yeah.
But I don't know how you could.
But I don't believe there are. Pierre, has anyone?
No, there, I received nothing on this subject, unless it's the one that Mr. Stern deal with, but I don't think so.
No, no, no.
So the only thing we're, the only thing we receive about minor derogation was from Mr. Stern. So all the other, I received nothing.
Okay.
Sorry, before we proceed on this one, given that it's a minor derogation, is there a? a, Harvey?
Serious prejudice.
Oh, there's a very serious prejudice about, I forget the number, it's either 13,000, 30,000.
There's, there's, it's a, it's a specific situation where the resident doesn't have enough room to park two cars side by side. They cannot expand their driveway to one side because there's a hydro Quebec line going under the property, which would cost 15,000 just to move. And as a result, the minor exemptions allowing them to use, make use of the one meter green space between the walkway and the driveway.
Yes, exactly. And we had passed a minor derogation for this property before. And after that, they discovered the hydro stuff underneath property, and that's why we're passing a slightly different one this time. And also waiving the minor exemption fees, which technically should be applicable, but given the very special nature here, that would, that does seem unfair. So it was proposed by councillor.
Shafer.
Budning, seconded by councillor Shafer. It is resolved that the request for minor exemption for the property located 229 Netherwood Road, lot number 2089868, Zon R A 2 is approved. Considering certain specific elements of this file, which we just mentioned, we will waive the payment of the cost for this minor exemption. Anyone opposed? Okay. So no one opposed, it passes. And of course, they did pay for the first minor exemption.
I actually want, I have a question.
Uh huh. Go ahead.
This is the first time I hear in my 15 years in council that we're waiving the minor derogation fees. Is that?
Only because they paid it already. They paid it for the first time. And only after they got their minor derogation that they discover that there was a hydro conduit underneath. So it, it seems a little unfair to charge them a second time for what is in effect the same minor exemption. They just have to do it this.
I'm not disputing, I'm not disputing allowing this or any of that. All I'm saying is, are we within our bylaws? Can we waive minor derogation fee?
Yes. I've asked that. The answer is yes.
Yeah, I confirm, Mr. Mayor. We can in this present case because they already paid for a minor derogation, but we cannot apply the first minor derogation. So it's simply like a correction of a minor derogation. So yes, we can waive the fee because we received the money. So it's, it's a way to say it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So 8.6. Now this is the one concerning 14 and 16 Merchant Road, which, yes, we got letters from the owner and we've considered this very carefully in caucus and after a long time, we made our decision. So it is proposed by councillor.
Budner.
Budning. Seconded by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer. And resolve that the request for the minor exemption for the property located 14 and 16 Merchant Road, lot number 2088911, and lot 2088910, Zon R A A, is refused. Now, I will mention at this point that the caucus, the council and caucus has decided that we will consider possibly changing our bylaws to allow what the owner wants to do. That doesn't mean we will or we won't, but we will consider that. But we do not believe we can justify a minor exemption because we do not believe there is a severe prejudice, which is a requirement. Okay, that doesn't mean we wouldn't change our bylaw. That may well be considered at some point. Okay. 8.7.
I, I, you didn't ask if anybody's opposed or anything else.
Oh, sorry. Is anyone opposed?
Well, I would, I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to outright refusing it. I was in favor of deferring it until we discuss this further and get more information and also look at our bylaws. That's what I was proposing.
Okay. Well, that, that has to be recorded as a opposition. Is that okay?
That's, that's fine.
Okay. So adopted by majority, opposed by councillor Goldwax. Okay, that brings us to 17 Briardale. On motion of councillor.
Budner.
Budning, seconded by councillor.
Alfasi.
Alfasi. It is resolved that the authorization for the facade modification of a detached single family dwelling located 17 Briard Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on November 9, 2020 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed?
Wait a minute, I have to wait till the end.
Open your post. That will definitely come back at a later in time. Brings us to 8.8 concerns 18 Thurlow Road. It is proposed by councillor.
Budner.
Seconded by councillor.
Goldwax. Oh, sorry. Alfasi, Alfasi, Alfasi.
Alfasi. And resolve that the request for two minor exemptions for the property located 18 Thurlow Road, lot number 2088849, Zon R A 1-1 is refused. And that brings us to, brings us to 8.9 concerning two houses, one and three heath. Okay, on motion of councillor.
Budner.
Budning, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the authorization for the facade modification of a semi-detached bi-family dwelling located 13 Heath Road is submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on November 9, 2020 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. I'll mention, this is interesting. It's two semi-detached homes together and they are going to make it one big home. And, and it's not that the PAC really, well, they think it's, it can be very nice. They just want it to be a little nicer, that's all. They're not opposed. No things. Okay. And that brings us to 8.10, which is 5 Cressy.
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify one thing so everyone understands? One and, one and three heath, while there's, the one and three are physically attached to five and seven heath as a semi-detached property, one and three are actually more like a duplex type of environment. So it's not like it's a semi-detached, it, the whole structure itself is semi-detached, but it's 1, 3, 5, 7 that are all semi-detached together. One and three are more of a duplex upper and lower level, which is one being made into one property. But it's still going to be partly joined to five and seven Heath Road.
Correct. Yes, which is very interesting. I'm not sure if we've had something like this before, but again, the PAC is impotable, particularly happy with it.
Wholesome place, it was done years ago.
Okay, maybe before my time then.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't want to say the name, but yes.
Okay, it was proposed by, this is 5 Cressy Road. It was proposed by councillor.
Budner.
Budning, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. And resolve that the request for the three minor exemptions for the property located 5 Cressy Road, lot number 2089544, Zon R A 1 is approved. Anyone opposed?
No, but it should be mentioned, these are existing situations that are just being legalized. Nothing is actually changing.
That's exactly right. 8.11, 22 Applewood Road. On motion of councillor.
Budner.
Budning, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Shafer, Goldwax. It is resolved that the authorization for the modification to the front porch of a detached single family dwelling located at 22 Applewood Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on November 9, 2020 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And that brings us to 8.12, 35 Holtham. On motion of councillor.
Budner.
Budning, seconded by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer. Is resolved that the authorization for an addition in the rear yard of a detached single family dwelling located 35 Holtham Road and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on November 9, 2020 is refused as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No. Adopted. And that brings us to. Disbursements. On motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer. It is resolved that the disbursements for the period from October 16, 2020 to November 15, 2020 in the total amount of $2,099,397.28 are hereby approved. Anyone opposed? It's adopted. And that brings us to. Transfer funds from appropriate surplus. On motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Seconded by councillor.
Shafer.
Okay, that was Eddy and Shafer. It is resolved that the town council approves the transfer of funds as further detailed in the following table for an amount of $1,452,193 from the appropriate surplus account 5599200 000 to cover expenses recorded in the 2020 fiscal period. And they're all there, the councillors know them, but there's too many to read all of them. But basically, they are for a golf cart, minor amount, Hampstead Park equipment, 18,000 or so, Queen Mary and Fleet res servicing, about 54,000, road rehabilitation, 730,000, sewer assessment, 24,000, sidewalk rehab, about 267,000, and the streetlight study, garage doors, a F-150 pickup, two of them for 53,000, a Sierra pickup, 1,500 of sidewalk, three sidewalk tractors, those are the ones councillor Goldwax was mentioning, that hopefully will chew up less grass, a number of things for IT, cloud storage, geomatique, My Hampstead pool inspection app, software, time control, vehicle tracking, snow removal, for snow removal, Wi-Fi access points and Windows 10 license fees, public security, for the public security cards, RAO software, computers, and for another public security vehicle, 52,000, speed panels, another 10,000. Urban planning that I presume was one of the studies we've done for the Coates and Luke Road development and beautification, trees, about 79,000. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, so that's adopted and, whoops. 9.3 is, is another transfer of funds, this time from the park fund. On motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer. Is resolved that town council approves the transfer of funds as further detailed in the following table in the amount of $18,966 from the unearned revenue park tax GL number 5599300 001 to cover expenses recorded in the 2020 fiscal period. It's $13,743 for Aldrid Park equipment upgrade, I think that was painting, and $5,223 for an outdoor ping pong table. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. 9.4, another transfer of funds from the inappropriate surplus. On motion of councillor.
Eddy.
Seconded by councillor. Eddy and Shafer. It is resolved that town council approves the transfer of funds in the amount of 400,000 from the inappropriate surplus GL account number 5599100004 to finance projected revenue shortfall, shortfalls in the 2021 budget on account of the COVID-19 pandemic. Anyone opposed?
Nope.
No, but it should be clarified that this amount is in surplus, but it's not our regular accumulated surplus. This is in surplus because the provincial government gave us a grant for specifically this purpose to offset shortfalls in our 21, 2021 budget because of COVID.
Expenses, yeah.
Yes, and by passing it, we're going to get the money. Good. 10.1. Authorization for the sale of vehicles and equipment. On motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, and seconded by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer. It was resolved that the director of material resources and information systems, with the approval of the director general, authorized to sell the items listed, is authorized to sell the items listed below. 2007 sprayer, a 200, now that must be 2,000 bucket, 1991 jumping jack, 2006 colas machine, 2008 utility trailer, 2006 tractor, and another 2006 tractor. Anyone opposed?
No, but I would just also like to explain, it's 2006 bucket vehicle. These vehicles are, are not functioning and rather than just scrapping them by, by selling them through the, the public auction, we do recuperate some of our funds and at least it gives us some money to purchase some better equipment.
Hey, thank you, thank you very much. For the additional information, brings us to 10.2. Granting of a contract for leasing of a Chevrolet Traverse 2020. On motion of councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. Is resolved to endorse the director general's decision to mandate the director of material resources and information technologies to sign the documents required for the 48 months leasing of a 2020 Chevrolet Traverse from Chevrolet at a monthly cost of $530.99 plus applicable taxes. Anyone opposed?
Nope.
Okay, that's adopted. And that brings us to 11.1. Approval of the hiring of Mr. Christian Charlton Legree as an auxiliary public security officer. On motion of councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer, seconded by councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, it is resolved to approve the hiring of Mr. Kristen Charlton Legree as auxiliary public security officer, having started November 20, 2020, subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Logo 429 and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. 11.2 is another public security, auxiliary public security officer. It was proposed by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. And resolve to approve the hiring of Mr. Sean Gagnon as auxiliary public security officer, having started November 30 of 2020, subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Logo 429 and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No. 11.3, another hiring. It was proposed by councillor.
Eddy.
Doesn't matter, whoever. Goldwax, Eddy, Eddy, Goldwax, doesn't matter.
Seconded by councillor Eddy. And resolve to prove the, to approve the hiring of Ms. Karina Toledo as permanent part-time payroll technician, having started November 19, 2020, subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective. In QP Logo 429 and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No. I do want to mention that Karina has been a very long-term employee of the town of Hampstead, very flexible employee, has, has filled in numerous different roles in the town. She's an excellent choice for payroll technician, which is what she's going to be doing now. 11.4. Creation of a permanent full-time 35 hours per week payroll technician position with the human resource department. It was proposed by councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer and resolved to create one permanent full-time thirty five hours per week payroll technician position, salary grade nine with the Human Resources Department and is hereby created in accordance with the provisions of the applicable collective agreement to fill the said position in the manner provided for in the collective agreement. Anyone opposed?
No, but just to clarify, it's a little bit misleading. We're not creating an entirely new position. We're turning a four day job into a five day job.
That is correct. Eleven point five, approval of the hiring of Ms. Karine Jean Charles as the permanent administrative secretary. It was proposed by councillor.
Wiegandberg.
Seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax and resolved to approve the hiring of Ms. Karine Jean Charles as permanent administrative secretary, secretary starting January fifth twenty twenty one, subject to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local four two nine and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No, and I will mention Karina is also, she's not nearly as long time as Karina, but she has been with us for at least a year or two working with urban planning and a little bit with public security and and I congratulate her on her new position. Eleven point six, and now we have to, now we have to take a recess and then we will come back and finish the rest of the agenda with possibly a couple of new items as well. So we are going to.
One question. Can we have the second question period as an?
I agree.
Because this way people don't have to hang around and wait.
And if they have questions top of mind, they can ask them.
As I'm told, I can do whatever I want, so fine.
So then go to, to go to twelve point one, Mr. Mayor, and then go to the next items, which is other matters and question period.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do twelve point one. We'll do the second question period and then with that, we're coming back to finish the last few items we need to do. Okay, twelve point one. Authorization to pay the expenses covering the town of Hampstead's share of the Montreal West Hampstead minor hockey expenses agreement. So on motion of councillor.
Buttoning.
Being seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that the council approves the payment of this expense at the end of the season, March twenty twenty one. The Costa Vagi program will not be exceeding twenty thousand. Anyone opposed? Okay, so that's adopted. In fact, at the moment, there is no hockey and if there's no hockey, we won't be paying anything. We are paying however, for time for just free skating. That's been publicized on our website and our Hampstead electronic newsletter. So people who want can sign up. It's free and take advantage. The town is paying. It's free for you. Okay, second question period. I see some questions here from anonymous. There's an M in brackets, so I don't know if that means anonymous mail or not, but whatever. Can each of the councillors and the mayor make a verbal commitment to beginning the meetings on time in twenty twenty one? My corporate meetings begin on time each and every day. Why can't we? And the answer is, I've discussed it before and it's not the same as corporate meetings. Okay, next. From Ilana Hirsch, I would like to suggest that the council, more specifically the mayor, undergo LGBTQ sensitivity training. The way you just spoke about the question comment is not only insensitive but backward thinking. There are several social workers that work at Bangshaw that provide these trainings free of charge and I would be happy to have a meeting with them and you. Thank you very much, Ilana. I appreciate the offer, but sorry, I don't think I need it. Okay, Morton Grossdorn, two questions on the transfer tax. How does this revise compare with comparable communities and if this is such a great amount of additional revenue, why are we two years late in adopting this enhancement to our revenue? Well, those are very good questions. As compared with comparable communities, we are simply doing what many, many other towns are doing, have done already. Laval, Montreal, West Island communities and so on. The majority of communities in the area have already done this. I don't know exactly when they did it, but many have done it before us. Why are we so late? Well, I only became aware of this in thanks to councillor Buttoning, who asked a very important question at, in a caucus meeting.
Don't.
Don't what? Don't what? So I only became aware of it when councillor Buttoning noticed something that from a report by a treasurer and asked about it and it was at that point that the council discovered this and of course, I guess since the entire council is now past it, the entire council thought this is a great idea. So I hope that answers your question. Next. Adrienne Decker, I'm not sure what was so funny about the comment about men and women. Let me educate you. Gender is not binary. There's not just men and women. There are people identify as neither female nor male. Research has shown that around forty percent of non-binary youth attempt suicide, over fifty percent of transgender male youth and over thirty percent of transgender woman youth attempt suicide. Maybe if you came to our gender identity clinic and see all the youth who have attempted suicide or have been kicked out of their parents' home and are homeless for being who they are, you wouldn't find it so funny. And having LGBTQ etcetera friends or family members doesn't mean that you're not a bigot. And the same way that having black friends, staff, partners doesn't mean you're not racist. You're entitled to your opinion, of which I totally disagree. And that's it. Question periods are over and and let's see now. What I suggest we do, at least what I'm doing, is I'm going to, I'm turning off my video feed and I'm turning off my, I'm muting myself so that the public will not hear me, but I'm not actually leaving the council meeting because I want to be sure I can get back to it. So that's what I'm doing. If you guys are more technologically savvy, do it any way you want. But we are now going to go on to our private caucus meeting to continue with that. And so I'm disappearing from here and I'll be back in our caucus meeting momentarily.
Wait, so what are we doing?
Back to, back to caucus.
Okay.
Just go to caucus. Go to your iPad, Jack.
Yeah.
...in our backyard, being all together.
Sustainability means people have to respect public health ecosystems and the environment.
In 2016, public health authorities began a national campaign in peaceful protest of police brutality and racial justice, although it hasn't played any effective effects.
C'est trois kilos Thierry ?
Non, je sais pas si tu veux dire ça. Si tu veux dire ça, tu dois aller à la caca.
Où est Thierry ?
Tu dois aller à la caca, le autre.
Oh, comment faire ?
C'est sur ton iPad, tu dois aller sur l'iPad.
Sur l'iPad ? Et sur l'iPad je vais aller... Oh, ici Thierry. Ok. Ok, il n'a pas envoyé le lien.
Je viens du précédent, celui qui était avant.
Oui, je suis là.
Je vais interrompre parce que nous ne voulons pas que tu aies.
Bien sûr.
C'est une bonne soirée Thierry, elle est assez longue.
Oui, mais nous on est encore public.
Ok. Il reste beaucoup de participants Thierry ?
Sept.
Sept de... du public, c'est ça ?
Oui.
Ok, je ferme mon micro.
D'accord.
Okay guys, I think I'm live, I'm back. We have a few little problems though. My iPad is now, has to be charged, I'm down to 1%. However, however, I have councillors here who can help out. So, I know we have one resolution that's on the agenda, we have to add three more resolutions. One of which I can read. I'll let one of you guys read it because I didn't mark it up, so I'll let Harvey.
I don't see it.
Does policy one?
The policy one, yes.
Resolution you're talking about?
I can read it.
I could read it too.
Okay. Harvey will read it, but we have another problem. There are two more resolutions we need to pass. Creating the positions, two of the positions. Not the one for communications, that one exists already because Andrew Ross had it. But, but we have two others.
Is Richard back online?
I don't know.
The new position for communications, is she the communications, what does her position mean? It's not communications director, it's what?
It's a division chief.
Division chief of communication.
That's right.
But, Richard, you also, there are two new resolutions that you wanted about, about the, I don't know, for two of the positions where the level went up.
That is the urban, urban planning. Okay, that's the director level four, urban planning and building inspections. And the director of information technology and systems, the level four.
Well, can, can you or Pierre read what you want and then we'll just say proposed by the councillor seconded and so on and pass them.
Do I do mine first, resolution first, or do I do, or Richard's come first?
Doesn't really matter, do yours first because I'm...
Alright, so I'll do mine.
Yeah.
So, the resolution...
First, we have to add items to the agenda. So, let me just...
So, we should have 11.7 a resolution, creating a communications policy for the town of Hampstead?
Yes, that's one.
Then we have a resolution for the appointment of director of information technology and systems?
That's right.
Then we have a resolution for the director level four urban planning?
That's right.
And we have the last one we didn't pass, which you have on your screen, 12 point, whatever it was.
Those, that'll be, the ones I just gave you are 11... Those, that'll be, the ones I just gave you are 11.7, 11.8 and 11.9.
Okay, so councillor Schaefer is moving that we add those items to the agenda, would someone second it?
I second it.
Okay, and Pierre, you with us? Pierre?
Hello Pierre!
He's there. Mr Mayor, with one correction, 12.1 was already passed prior to the break in council.
Yes, that's correct. Whatever it is, it's 11 point something.
No, no, I'm saying 12.1, the community, the authorization for Montreal West skating, we passed that prior to going on the breaks, you said.
I know, you're right, you're right, you're right, but we still have 11 something that we didn't pass.
No, I know, I know, I know, I know.
Okay, but we need Pierre, this meeting.
Okay, so let me do 11.7.
He's on, but I don't, he's not speaking, he's physically joined the meeting, but he's not.
Mr Mayor, can I do 11.7?
As soon as I know Pierre is here, he has to be here.
Okay.
Pierre!
Why don't you just call him?
Pierre is snooping.
I am calling him.
Somebody call.
He's here, he's here, guys, he's on the meeting.
I know, he's on the meeting, but I don't think he's in front of his computer.
He's waving, he's waving to you all.
I, I don't see it.
Pierre, say something.
So do Pierre. He's, he's on mute, or his microphone is on.
He's sleeping.
He's waving.
His microphone doesn't work, but he's here, he's waving at us. He's nodding his head right now, he's waving again.
Okay, I can't see him, but if he's there, fine.
Okay, so 11.7 is the following resolution, adoption of the resolution, creating a communications policy for the town of Hampstead. Considering the town of Hampstead wishes to establish communications policy, considering the mandate of the communications director is to oversee all external communications between the town of Hampstead and its residents, including but not limited to print, radio, television and electronic communications. Considering the mandate of the communications director will be, excuse me, of the division chief of communications will be to ensure the integrity of all external communications, ensuring that all communications are solely in the best interest of the town, that they be nonpartisan, apolitical in nature and that they be truthful and accurate. On motion of councillor.
Etterich.
Seconded by councillor.
Wiegandberg.
It is resolved that the town of Hampstead establish a communications policy for the town of Hampstead which is to be governed by the terms listed in the preamble given above.
Okay, anyone opposed?
All in favor?
Everyone's in favor.
Can you hear me? Yes, we can Pierre, all in favor.
I'd like to have a copy of what you just said Harvey.
Okay, I'll send it to you Pierre.
Yeah.
Okay, there's no one against, so I guess it's approved unanimously.
Yes.
Yeah, isn't the creation of the, of a chief division or only the creation of a policy?
It's the policy and it's adoption of the, creating a communications policy for the town of Hampstead.
Okay.
And we have two more to go, two more new ones to go.
So you have a creation of policy, but what's about the creation of the chief of, division chief for communication, is that something else?
No, it's in mention in the policy, it's the, the mandate of the communication, of the division chief of communications will be to ensure, I'll, I just sent it to you Pierre, but in the last paragraph where it says the mandate, it says of the communications director, that's a mistake, it's, it's the mandate of the division chief of communications as Mr Sun stated, that's the way it should read, correct Richard?
That's correct, okay.
Okay, no problem, okay.
Communications division chief instead of director.
I sent it to you just now, Maitre Tap Konfrere.
Yeah, okay, just send it to me through email, I will.
I did, I did, I did, done, done, D O N E.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have to pass a resolution which will be 11.8, the director of information technology and systems.
That's right.
Are we mentioning the name of the person who it will be, Mr Sun?
Normally we don't, but of course in your preamble you may. Do you have a copy of the resolution or do you want me to read it?
I don't have it, so I guess maybe, does Pierre have it?
No, no, I'll read it, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, by your leave, Mr Mayor and members of council, resolution to the creation of a new function and a new position of director, level four information systems. It is to be proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Sorry?
I said Goldwax.
Thank you.
And seconded by Schaefer.
And this will create a new management function of director of information systems, salary level four, and to fill one position in the newly created function. Okay.
You'll send me the text Richard, if you have a text?
Yes, I will, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I have an infringement too.
Are we gonna ask if they're all, if all the council members are in favor, including the mayor?
Yes, we're all in favor.
Okay. So then we have one more, we have the resolution for the appointment of director level four for urban planning, do you have the resolution for that, Mr Sun?
Yes sir, I shall read it, resolution for the creation of a new function and a new position of director urban planning and building inspections. Councillor Mayor please propose, anyone proposing?
I do, Schaefer.
Seconded.
Warren.
Yeah.
Warren, sorry.
Thank you, and this will create a new, anyone opposed, yeah, that's true.
Nope.
No. Okay, so all been passed, we still have to pass the other one, which is about all the salary increases and bonuses, it's just one resolution, we already had it in our package.
11.6. 11.6.
That was 11.6 that we left out.
Yeah, so it's 11.6, but I don't have it in front of me, so someone's gonna have to read it.
Okay, I don't have one either. Mr Metteur Schaefer, would you do the.
Try and pull that out right now.
I'll read it, you want 11.6?
Yeah, yeah.
It was proposed by councillor.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor.
Etterich.
And resolved to ratify the recommendations of the director general regarding the adjustments of the remuneration of management personnel for the year 2021, effective as of January 1st 2021, the whole in accordance with the management remuneration policy of the town of Hampstead adopted April 1st 2019 under the resolution number 2019-094 and contained in the confidential management salaries file in the human resource director's office.
Anyone opposed?
I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed, but I am, I am making a statement publicly that I am not comfortable with one of the percentages of the increase, that's all.
Okay, so that passes and that finishes the meeting, but I just need one piece, I just wanna remind, it doesn't matter if the public's listening, we have our special budget council meeting on the 21st, you will get the official public notice at some time, we have a private caucus meeting on the budget, I forget what Harvey said, you're free on which date Harvey, the 15th or the 17th?
I said, my better, my only chance is the 15th, the 17th is totally impossible.
Okay, so everybody, I'll send an email with the advice that the budget meeting is on December 15th.
But what time would it be Bill, because I know the courts are going late to try and finish cases before Christmas.
So what do you want, 7pm?
Well, not before, that's for sure.
Well, let's make it 7pm, because the later we start, the later it goes.
It's just that I can't.
It's gonna be a relatively long meeting that one. Yeah, start at 7pm, we're gonna be up till 12 again, just heads up.
Sorry, sorry, what I'll do is back to everyone, we're still in a public meeting, so I don't think we should be discussing this publicly.
Okay, I agree with Michael.
Okay, we'll take it. We'll do it by email, we'll do it by email, okay?
Very good, is this adjournment now?
Yes. Someone want to move adjournment?
Goldwax.
Schaefer.
Goldwax.
Councillor Goldwax, councillor Schaefer, anyone opposed?
I don't know.
The meeting's over, thank you all very much and goodbye.
Okay, Richard, I'm waiting for your text if possible and I'm working on it right now.
Okay.